Now we don't have any, hopefully, any sooner than 400 pages of...
Yeah.
...back up chairs.
It is contact with my...
Here, here. You want visual, here, here.
Item number six, approval of the 2019-2020 adopted budget and adopted budget multi-year projection assumptions. Let's have a motion to approve or... I was worried that's... Okay, you have a second? Chris, a motion and a second to approve item six. Is there any discussion? Okay, so it's a roll call.
Well, Dr. Baker, thank you, Mrs. Preston.
Aye.
Mrs. Preston. This is Brad Brown. This is Butler.
Aye, motion carries. All right, let's go.
Again, very much part of work, because I know that this...
Good work. And again, less pages in front of us.
At least he was pretty good.
Okay. Item seven, approval of withdrawal of waiver request from State Board of Education Agenda July 11th and 12th, 2019. Scott.
This is reflected over the direction of giving a word on closed session last month, formalize that direction to withdraw, just a note, a progress note that actually being placed on the State Board Agenda was significant action for us, which a lot of time to get there, this board went through a lot of time to make that happen in other hearings, and we're very pleased to be on the agenda of the political process of which is waiting. And we're in place now where it's appropriate to remove based on trailer bill language, maybe seventy-five of education on the US bill that places in a very favorable position financially for 1920 and beyond and for other basic aid districts as well in the same situation from charters. So it's especially good thing that we're doing it in August. I will provide a public update on where we are with all things, all of the road, and speak to some of the current year actions that we've taken. Again, we have not paid yet, we are still in the page on our legal receipt of all the road, but this was one of those major pieces that we need to take care of, which is a legislative solution for long-term effects, but we've achieved that.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the withdrawal of the waiver request? I would like to make the motion. Aye. And a second?
Is that okay?
Thank you. The motion and a second to approve the promptly waiver, are there any discussions? Chris, removing this waiver now, this means that we are going to pay the bill that has been sent us?
So no, it is not. The trailer bill language is a legislative solution commencing with 2019, 2020 school year and beyond. It does not address current year. That would be settled through the current legal process of regation and all of the road at this point, current year.
So we have, the state has that saying, we owe a certain amount, are we removing this? Does that fit us? Did we check the date?
No, so that's actually a great question. So we are exercising some goodwill on both sides of the California Department of Education, and it's needing, we are as deep in the process as we are with all of this, at this point we have beyond a reasonable assurance that if for some reason things were completely separate, you have nothing to indicate that they will, that we are positioned very well if we need to go back to the State Board because of a breach of the faith. So I believe we're positioned ourselves pretty well for this one. So that's a great, that's a great question, because we are giving up something when we have yet to have final sign that the state budget has been approved. Trailer bill language is still being worked on, ours is not part of it based on everything that we know to this point. Seems fewer, there are other facets of maybe seventy-five that are being worked on than ours.
So are, to make what we have, to make this then something that's very beneficial for basic aid districts?
Correct, yeah, this will benefit not just us but other basic aids that are similar to our stance statewide, because this is changing education or state state law schools.
Okay, John, a question?
Yes.
Could I ask if you would consider an August board meeting doing an updated PowerPoint? PowerPoint you gave at the March board meeting, maybe February, library?
The waiver, yes.
Was extremely good. Many of the public then for the first time understood the gravity of the situation. Thank you again.
Right.
And I think that if you put on a website some type of notice, there would be a much better show than tonight, and those people would appreciate it. Everything that we've been talking about now, everything that's still locked confidential and private could be made public, people would appreciate that.
Great suggestion.
We'll do, yeah, so we'll be, we'll be powerful, we'll make sure to advertise that as well.
Great. Because I remember that meeting, there were several community members who were fired up and ready to sign the petition and go to Sacramento, I mean, so we owe it to them to clean, you know, updating the...
Right, yeah, good suggestion.
Good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the withdrawal of the waiver request. This is a roll call.
Dr. Baker?
Aye.
Mrs. Preston?
Aye.
This is Butler.
Aye, and the motion carries five zero, thank you. Let's go on to D's discussion agenda, and we have two items. So first is one, discipline policy and procedures, and suggested wording change. Scott?
Sure. John, I don't know how deeply you want to go into this because it's a conversation, but there was a request for John to most specifically ask some of the information regarding our discipline policy and procedures. I'll just pass that along to you too, if any of the public is interested, because this is quite regular reading, and you're welcome to think of one of those. So Dr. Baker's request was actually modify some of the wording to reflect, and likely so, on what we are experiencing with the new epidemic that is vaping. And so just ahead, and there's some pieces for you to sort of read, I'm not by a degree with the ability to read, but suffice it to say that one of Mr. Paul's summer projects is going through our current discipline policy and procedures to update language to reflect the prevalence and the issue that is surrounding vaping, even though the info currently allows us to do whatever it is that we need to do in regards to possession of a vaping device was to fall into the category paraphernalia, which is pretty broadly defined here, and also controlled substances, whether it's delivery device or THC or nicotine, we do have that flexibility, we don't have that, we need to do with that disciplinary standpoint, but we really should be specifically, to John's point, calling out vaping. So that's currently being done, there's a draft, an updated draft will come to the board for a first reading at the August board meeting, and there will be opportunity for lots of anything, but then, and it will come back in September, or if we need to revisit for another, that's okay, we can do that. But this reflects John's specific request, and just some of the pertinent points of response to that, but there is broader work being done. So happy to, John, any questions or points if you want to make?
Yes.
Or anybody else for board two.
I'm not so naive as to think for one moment this and only this is going to have any significant impact of vaping on campus, because I would hazard to guess most students would not read. The purpose of this in my mind is so that the administration of Peter Haas is protected when a screaming parent does read it and interprets it in a different way than we interpret. So I want to remove any widdle room. For example, in our generation, paraphernalia mainly than the bomb, and I'm going to guess that most people today would not think that electronic cigarette would fall into the category as paraphernalia, that would be before the courts determine. So let's remove that widdle room?
Sure.
And just go ahead and specifically call it out. Number two, there's a comma after the word smoking. If there wasn't that comma, smoking use or possession of tobacco, then there would be no reason to assume that that also includes marijuana. I would argue that with the comma, that makes smoking a completely different item than use or possession of tobacco. Therefore, in a court of law, if I was an attorney, I would argue that smoking encompasses everything and anything that you might smoke. But I would again suggest let's remove the widdle room, and if we've got tobacco specifically itemized, then let's specifically itemize marijuana. Again, I don't think that any rewording we do by itself is going to affect student usage by trying to protect the school from angry parents or lively attorneys.
So it is a wise thing to do, there are tighter, we can make it better off, but there's challenges, there's always challenges, so, okay?
That's a question too.
Sure.
Regarding this, I mean, I understand suspend the kids for one to three days, absolutely. Portability address counseling, or what kind of steps do we take to remediate or help the kids with this?
Yeah, and so, you know, off the top of my head, I don't recall how that's specifically called out in there, but there are other alternatives, including this thing, this teen court, I'm actually looking at even online educational pieces that kids would have to complete. So what are those, education, is education, maybe no discipline won't necessarily change the behavior. Most effective route, discipline is necessary to get out of state campus, but the most effective route is education ultimately for the long term. That's the piece that we really need to work on, yes, or, and on that this year, but we got a long way to go with it, and one of those steps is quite...
I really appreciate John taking the lead on this, because I think absolutely this is something we should be concerned about, but I agree that discipline, that's, a lot of teenagers are not going to react in that particular. We want to get them off the stuff as well as we can, so I'd like to see what we have placed in, I mean, obviously it's a privilege of parents, but we are thinking more important.
Sure. So as a condition of that process, education is part of that as well, in general as well, the education points we're doing too. I could, and I'd share with a couple of you, current generation students that are riding this wave of vaping are the game tapes of the future in terms of what researches about the vaping, we can, no...
John blew up from smoking, did you see that? That was horrible.
Yeah, I did, but...
Did anybody else see that, John? Did you see that? Yeah, it was, was taking a hit off a cigarette, his parents gave him that to get him off cigarettes, and it exploded in his jaw, had a, for a surgery, I think, afterwards.
But the levels of, and both fields, you see now nicotine is being considered about on developing rates, or just pop off the charts, and, you know...
Chris, is there anything inherent with devils for marijuana?
Not much.
And else?
Yeah, that's how it is actually here.
Yeah, because, because, there's, there's smoking, it's scary, because you go, you know, someone offers you something, and I remember way back in the day, something that happened with students in that, with the yellow, like probably in the seventies, and I think it's even more common, you know, the replacement of marijuana.
Yes, the rest certainly.
We really need to have that in there, also, we should have, you know...
Okay. So, okay, but that will have a, a, a draft to your office.
Great, great, great.
I wonder if there's any need, we're really trying to button this up, you know, THC has been isolated and can be given medically?
Yes.
In capsule form. So I'm wondering whether there's a problem of kids getting on the black market or taking out of their family medicine cabinet, capsule or THC abusing that, and then they can say, well, that wasn't marijuana, you didn't say THC in your, Mr. Corey, you said marijuana.
Controlled substances, under that category. So it is very broad, and...
And obviously the word controlled substance, but that would do it.
Yeah, so that's actually number seven, circle that, Corey, preferences control substance. Did I say that correctly? So...
Yes.
Thank you.
We didn't tighten that up, but yes, and one of the, one of the other regions just behind vaping is the idea of prescription drugs, you know, what's happening in the population.
Right, and you're working with Mary Conley, the youth coalition to put some things together, right?
Yes.
Okay, that'll become that soon, right?
Yep.
And September, also, maybe?
Maybe in the first, September, and so we should get some placement from October.
Right. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, item two is improving staff communications, and you want to pick us up to speed on that?
Sure, so I have a request from Dr. Baker, we've been talking about ways to improve staff communications, and so he had asked, kind of, I can on the agenda, so John, I'll let you lead off.
Thank you. I have a statement I'd like to read, and to anybody that cares, here's copies, you're free to have. Background, the common problem confronting many school boards is those governed, i.e. the faculty, often feel they are underrepresented and their voice is not heard. Certainly this applies to many of our teachers. This situation commonly presents during any renegotiations of contracts. As teachers' compensation accounts for the largest percentage of any school budget, approximately 75% for the San Diego Valley Union High School District, naturally any decision enacted by the board which has a significant fiscal impact on the budget will impact the teachers. Another frequent challenge for all school boards is during these months when no items are being debated, which seems to have a direct impact on the faculty, no members of the teaching staff are present to hear the discourse. The cumulative significance of these seemingly mundane matters only later becomes apparent when contract negotiations and budget planning are the topic du jour. I am an ardent supporter of our teachers. My mother was a public school teacher for 40 years. In some manner, every issue which comes before our board affects our teachers. We need a mechanism whereby the San Diego Valley Union High School District teachers may contribute a more valuable role in the decision-making processes which affect their careers and our children's education. Though in keeping with the Brown Act, the California School Board Association and policies of the San Diego Valley Union High School District, I believe simply granting teachers a mere three minutes during the monthly public comment or an occasional PowerPoint presentation is inadequate for their voices to be heard. Thus, the proposal, institution of a permanent seat at the table of the San Diego Valley Union High School District Board of Trustees, which shall be occupied by a faculty member teaching full-time at San Diego Valley Union High School, as this individual would not have been elected to the Board of Trustees as mandated by law, the seat holder would be an, quote, advisor, or, quote, representative, end of quote. As with all board members, the position would receive no remuneration. The individual would be a non-voting member and not able to access privileged information or communications otherwise restricted to elected board members. They would not be able to participate in closed-session meetings, but yet is mandated by law. However, they would be allowed, indeed encouraged, to engage the board and superintendent in any public discussion or debate during proceedings of the San Diego Valley Union High School District, School Board. This individual would be allowed to speak as freely as a duly-elected board member. I propose the method of selection and length of any term for the seat holder be determined at the sole discretion of the faculty. Likewise, the faculty shall determine what mechanism to institute which would most effectively act as a conduit for transmitting information and opinions between the two bodies. The intent of this proposal is for our teaching staff to know we sincerely value their opinions. I have received some negative reaction to this proposal, which I welcome. Thus, what I would initially propose would be a period of time for public comment. I would ask the board and administration to post on the district's website this topic, soliciting public opinion either via mail or at the microphone. Seating a non-voting member for, of the teaching profession at the table is a practice embraced by many school boards across the country, not the least of which is the Alabama State Board of Education, respectfully submitted. And I would invite discussion.
First of all, I have a question, and that is, Dan, I'd rather be here, but you can answer that, of course. Is it legal to have a paid employee sitting with the board under the proposal that John was talking about?
There's relevant education code that basically states in pretty plain terms that employees can't be board members as well as employees at the same time. The, the way that the education code functions in that regard is that it says that the employee can't be sworn in as a board member, and it states appointed or elected prior to, without having resigned or position with the district.
Sort of just like, appointed as...
So if like there's a...
Like a provisional appointment?
If there was a vacancy or something like that?
Gotcha.
The board was taking action to appoint, so this, this relatively recent one in California, there's a couple of age of things that are relevant as well, turn general opinions that are guidance for school interests, without, you know, making a formal opinion, because I think this is a very creative and proposal that I'm not, that I haven't analyzed fully. So actually coming out of San Luis Obispo, back in the nineties, there was an employee who was both board member, elected, and unemployed, and it creates a number of problems, especially with contract negotiations and communication, being both your employer as well as your...
But Dan, as you're an employee, meaning to insinuate that this person would be a board member, they would be, as I said here, an advisor?
Right, and that's why I was...
Or a representative, and frankly, I don't see their employment by the district as any more potential conflict of interest than I do Mr. Haas or Mr. Swines sitting at the very same table.
Sure, and that's why I'm not making an unquotable statement to answer that question. I think you could, and when you'd be analyzing...
To, to, though, to clarify, I am absolutely not saying that this person would be a non-voting board member.
Right, right.
Absolutely not.
I just wanted to know if there was any, you know, legal issue or ed code violation or anything like that, if you have, you know, like, a board, you have a faculty person, a rep, sitting at the board table, you know, involved in the discussion, et cetera, and as John's pointed out in his, in his proposal, you know, obviously non-voting, et cetera, the fact that they wouldn't have access to confidential information, or members receive, definitely not involved in closed, closed session, et cetera. So, you know, just...
Yeah, so I, I think that it would, that it could require, you know, an in-depth analysis if the board was interested in a legal opinion, that we provide, you know, this confidential information. The, the proposal sounds very analogous to like a high, a high school district, or a district that has a high school being authorized specifically to have a student board member, the kind of role that you're describing. The way some districts do this that I've seen is they, they have on the agenda, so not that an individual will be up to, like, some diocese, but that they have a spot on the agenda specifically for, for example, a teacher's organization to make the formal report at every meeting, and then you could also do that for your classified employees union. Those are some of the ways that I've seen handle that, and this is a new approach, so...
Well, the thing, like, could, to me, it changes the conversation, because what prompted this is the angst that happened before I got on the board, that when the teachers were negotiating for their, their contract renewal, and how that conversation could have been different if there was some manner that those teachers could have been experiencing the past 24 months of board meetings and heard all of the conversations that went on to spending the other 25% of the school's budget. And of course, there would be no way of getting all those people here, but if there was one teacher representative who could personally communicate as one of their own, as one of, as one of the fellow teachers saying, you know, what you're not realizing is, here are the stressors this school is having to deal with, because, you know, I was at the February board meeting, and I was at the March board meeting, and they were talking about that you weren't, let me tell you what's going on. I think, I think that that would be important. Similarly, if the teachers feel like we're not listening to them, then they can give this representative and hear from, not here, but on their own time, and then that representative can take more than the mandatory three minutes, if she wants to take 15, 30 minutes, if she wants to give a PowerPoint display, then fine, we would let her do that.
Tony, you have, go ahead, question. I'm just trying to work through this, because it's an interesting concept.
The frustration is the Brown Act does not allow the five of us outside of this board meeting to be able to hear a teacher or teacher's report. And so then you said, well, then we do it at the confines of the Brown Act. Fine, but it's only going to be three minutes.
Let me ask you something, because I'm interested, Melanie Vicki's English teacher's been here for 27 years, she comes to almost all of our meetings, I think not on vacation right now, but she's been diligent, she'll sit in great favors, but she's listening the whole time. Now, if you have teachers who are doing that, and some teachers will, if they don't have kids and they're not coaching and those kinds of things, wouldn't that be already a resource for the teachers, saying, hey, you go to all the meetings, or you appear? Okay, I, do we need to codify that position, or do we just say, so, Jazzy, we would really like you guys to be here, you know, in the past, because the most faculty association that had way back when, people would say, okay, I'm covering this one, you're covering next one, et cetera, et cetera. They had that option to do that always, maybe it'd be encouraged, and I know Scott's very good at briefing teachers as well, having been in that position, I remember way back when, Scott coming and saying, down the road, RLP's going away, the regional occupation program, down the road, we're going to have some serious financial issues, just so you know, we've got CalSTRS going up, et cetera. He was very good, now, although that came from their boss, the superintendent, I think that, and I really, and big about staff communication, I think you're right on with that, but...
I have a, I have a response to your rhetorical question. It's not the same. The optics are huge. Having some teacher sitting right there with her name engraved on it, on the nameplate, that is huge, in my humble opinion.
So it's an optic thing?
It's more than that.
Not necessarily, well...
Oh, no.
If you have teachers, maybe just real fast, if you have teachers sitting here and listening, and, sorry, but...
Yeah, occasionally we do.
Yeah.
But for, for them to know that we have a seat for you folks that's, that's reserved for you, this, this shows how much we value that person's input.
What about the classified employees?
Well...
Don't we value their...
Fine, one step at a time, but, you know, something's better than nothing, which is what they've got right now. Or, or you combine the classified and the certified and all the staff together and let them decide which one person would best represent the whole body. I, I don't care, but I, I think the board coming down a little bit out of our ivory tower and saying, you know, we respect you folks, now we want somebody to sit at the table with us.
I mean, so, we have four of this in Houston, I, I, and I think that there's, you know, it's probably changed over the years, and some of it had to do with what John is talking about, negotiations and issues and misunderstandings, and the superintendent said this, and the board said that, and I talked to her and him and all, you know, I mean, it was, it was difficult. There's a, there's a couple of things that happened, is the, the certified and the classified representative, and they, they can have somebody sub for them if their child got sick, were always, always on the agenda, even if they didn't have anything that they needed to say, and it wasn't three minutes, because if we give the math department or the English department 10 to 15 minutes, we certainly can allow that to, to the men and women that are in the classroom, so I don't think that that's an issue at all. It doesn't fall into the... And I don't know if Jan can remember all of that, but there are also, and the teachers used to, of course, Melanie has been here a lot, and others have as well, the teachers used to rotate the meetings.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
They used to rotate the meetings, and, and while I, I agree that there could be some issues in terms of them... Yes, they used to rotate the meetings and while I agree that there could be some issues in terms of them, you know, having the place, I think, and I may be wrong, I think that they felt they had a voice. I think that they felt that we were listening. And I mean, that was my thing, that I was a board member, I was the board president, and I believe it was the same person who presented. So it could be a way to maybe start this process with being a certified and a classified slot on the agenda. Scott, I can't think of...
Well, I'm willing to admit that this idea has no legs. I think the answer is we open it up for public comment and especially encourage it, teachers, to give us your thoughts. And goodness gracious, if the vast majority of the teachers aren't supportive of it, well, I'll back off rapidly.
So maybe a form of a survey or something like that, a simple survey, what are your thoughts about this? Did you get such wide as far as views on faculty too, that it's...
Okay, well, then don't open it up like that, just make it a checkbox, you know? Love the idea, loop more, pay it.
Yeah, I mean, you could simplify it. I also think that the roles, the responsibilities, the certificate and the classified staff can find in their day to be at our meetings, and I know a lot of them, you know, they do try to come, but so that concerns me in terms of the weight on them. Just going back, I need to when, for example, and I've seen this in other districts where they have on the agenda designated staff or board, you know, the representative, the classified and the certificate. And it's usually really effective because, you know, whoever is going to be doing that report or update or whatever is really focused, they've done their homework, they have concerns, it's A, B, C, if it's to report goods, something good, et cetera. It's pretty powerful, but I've seen it as a way to give them that voice that John's talking about because once you put something on an agenda as this is not a one-time deal, this is a, you know, it's going to be item whatever it is, et cetera, on, continuing on the agenda, then it seems to have some legs to it.
Well, tonight's discussion is a case in point. How much better would this discussion be right now if there was some teacher representative sitting right there talking about it? We have no teacher right here, thank goodness we have a videotape, so any of the teachers that maybe later are interested in this conversation can go and pull it up. But wouldn't this whole thing be easier to communicate with the teachers if there was a representative right there?
Possibly, possibly, yes. It doesn't really matter. But I think that a lot of times we have teachers who are classified.
Chris? I think our teachers know that they're welcome to come to the meeting. That's always my comment at the time. I started teaching there and time I spent on the board, and it only seems to happen traditionally during classes or insert, it just sort of nature of game. I like the idea I gave here of a quick, a big, a survey because we're trying to reach out and improve those communications. So let's see if they're interested. If they are, because there will be times, I can see if this did with some ways, there will be times where you'll have somebody ready to do it and then the board are getting to do any work, you may not have some.
The changes. It's like we're trying to stand for side counsel.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And then you would need some way to, what happened was sitting with the board to confer with Scott afterwards because you need to want to be giving a message that everyone felt was happening. Because, so there's many things that I think need to be addressed.
Well, if the board decided you liked the survey idea, Scott, nobody's spending a dime then getting a formal legal opinion because if the teachers in line come back saying they don't like the idea, then this is a moot point, whatever opinion you get from counsel.
So I think it's important for the board to have a, for the board to have a, which was a request for correct student, to facilitate a student sitting.
It allows it.
Yeah, it allows that to happen. And so I think I'm finding myself seeing out of the idea that a paid employee can't do it, they can't sit on the board as an employee because the ed code implies it'll help me out of this. It puts them in a spot that if you've got a paid employee sitting up here interacting on all of those decisions...
So it creates a perception, well, I think you're referring to, it creates a perception of conflict of interest. For one thing, because there may be making decisions that impact, obviously, directly their compensation. There are other issues that I believe would need to be analyzed as well, not to mention the constitutional free speech issues of favorable groups viewpoint over others. But the way that an elected board operates already is that you are elected by your community. And so that is one way that an organization, not just a union, but would have their influence politically speaking would be through the existing mechanisms of electing board members. So I think the legal opinion would be technical and have to address a lot of those issues. So, and I don't, I can't give you an unequivocal opinion in this setting, partly because of the nature of our communications as I'm your attorney. So, so without, without going to make an unequivocal statement of that nature, I think that there are a lot of potential problems with allowing one group a formal place on the board. And I know you're mentioning not technically a board member, but an advisor type position because, because it creates a perception, right, that that person is a member of the board. How is that person chosen? What organizations are allowed to do that, et cetera? And then not to mention the fact that the structure of your board is already governed by applicable both the education code as well as the elections code and the government code, the Brown Act being part of that. And any structural changes to the board itself has to go through a process of the county committee on school district elections, so, which is part of the county office, county education office. So, so I think there are a lot of technicalities to it. I think that, I don't know of the district in California that doesn't, although I have done exhaustive research on that point of that, but I have certainly been within our firm to see if anyone was aware of it.
Something like this, because I know Scott is very good about sending out the board agenda to all faculty. In fact, I'm sure you've heard, I've heard from faculty members, past year, I wrote all the days, saying, hey, we really have two teachers using a speed this year, I was just reading the agenda. So, and I think that's a really good step toward that. Why don't we reach out to the faculty and said, look, you look at these agendas, let us, if you have something, we want you to come here, we want to hear what you have to say, we really want to hear your invitation, and extend that invitation consistently before every single meeting. Maybe that way we could avoid some of that and they would feel welcome. A lot of the faculty, I think, are very intimidated by the board here, but they see us as their bosses and having been on that side, because I always have the board have one more power than they do than we do, you know, because we seem that way. But I think if we did something like that, it would serve the purpose, I think it'd be a really good idea. Have, get them here, increase...
I don't know for that, but my suspicion is that it'll put like fall back into the same routine that we've been operating.
Well, if we keep pushing them and say, hey, we really want to hear from you, and we worked through faculty leadership as well and say, you guys know, we all had a breakdown way back before we got on the board, there were some issues, so let's, we want it, we want it.
The word I used in my report was I described so many of the board meetings and board matters as mundane, totally boring. And I, but it isn't until maybe two years later, when we get into controversial contract negotiations, that all of a sudden some seemingly mundane issues made too much prior have some significance. But because it was deemed at the time as being mundane, even looking in advance of tonight's agenda meeting or we, or agenda items, nobody shows up. And that's like, oh, we had slack, did you? What? We got a little slack.
They're exhausted, yeah. Three cheers for Melanie for being here for the channel I was leading. So, is there any direction from the board to super territory on this topic? There were a couple of good suggestions.
Suggestive.
Territory, because we know, we all know that communication is like a critical issue.
And I don't think we're going to get in trouble because after listening to your comments, it means we need to be very careful about how we proceed forward. But I think just emphasizing things that are on the agenda and maybe emphasizing certain things that you really, you know, need to be aware of, maybe if you just keep doing it, you might get some response.
And would that be targeted not only to all this staff?
To all staff.
But also to emphasis to the faculty leadership? Anybody we can talk, department heads would be a good place to start as well, like, you know, academic department heads, everybody at any kind of position on that. We want you guys here, we need to hear from you, and this is what we're asking you to do, help us here. So is that a direction? We don't have any, yeah, that's a great idea, but I can't think of any reason I can try and dig deep what we could pass a lot of agenda or certificate with, just like the principal, superintendent, same with classified. It would, it could be a way, maybe not to get to exactly what you're suggesting, but it could be a way to begin the conversation is that, you know, Mr. Swines is on here and we want you, and if it's the leadership, it could be anybody, really.
I just wonder if, if the tone of the conversation, the bitterness that was directed at the board by certain teachers last fall, might have in any way had been lessened had we had somebody sitting at this table representing them many months prior.
Oh, that's an interesting question, it really is.
I have a recommendation, just from my side of things, that we would not exclude classified. Classified does feel at times like they're slighted or like have as key a role in what occurs here as teachers. And if we're talking about optics, not valuing at the same level classified as certified, I think this is more applications.
I was trying to exclude them. My thought would be, put them all in the little theater together, everybody, and then you guys as a group, decide who you want. And if it turns out to be a classified staff, so be it.
I was just saying, I was going to port the idea that, talking about the agenda piece, et cetera. If it was, if it included all staff, otherwise I'm not interested.
Is it agenda item or John's suggestion?
No, I'm just, I, John, to pursue, you know, we're trying to give you direction.
Yes, absolutely.
And I would say, well, whatever, I hope I can, that I would want to consider all staff. You know, for example, when we're talking about sending out, Tori's idea, the agenda out and to keep people, et cetera. But then say, you know, make sure department heads and reach out to faculty leadership. You know, so if we're going to do that, which I kind of like the idea, that we, it's not just restricted to the certificated staff, it's all staff. Otherwise, I'm, otherwise I'm not interested.
Absolutely, it needs to be all staff.
So is that, is that a starting point? Are we comfortable with that? Are we, you know...
I think there's a companion piece here in terms of being clear about code sections that may have, I think that's important. Like I said, a student is not able to remember what allows for that, like in a code addresses they're aware of in regards to staff, they can't be staff meeting board members. So where's the, where's the legal opinion in between that, just to make sure that they're not unintentionally?
But if we're starting, if we're starting with the concept of the, not having a person seated here, we're talking about dialing it back and possibly going to the agenda piece. Starting there?
Starting there. And then maybe in the agenda of that place where you would say, if they had a conflict...
Or they wanted to bring, you know, back.
I don't know how, you know, sometimes we don't hit this, hit the agenda until, you know, three or four days before. So it may be difficult, but they would have the ability, if somebody wanted to respond, they could. And it wouldn't be hindered by, you didn't do it at the same time? Because it wasn't posted there. We could have a own agenda that they may from maintenance week, they may from, you know, have something that they...
So is the direct member, Scott, to pursue, a couple of suggestions that we have talked about and coming back to those? I think it's solid. Coming back, I think this has been a really good discussion, thank you, John. So I, coming back, I guess.
So are we opening, are we opening things up with, to make sure that there's an error or not, it's going to be a little under an agenda piece and initiating something on the agenda?
Do we consider that? Do we wait on that? I mean, I like that. I think the first step is what you suggested about getting that agenda out, pointedly to all. And sending a note with it saying, we really would like them having to go to our meetings, we're interested in your opinions, we're, you know, we're going to...
Start there.
That's almost like the survey because if we get yank, then we give yank. But we just need to push it though, I think we need to mark it that way.
Well, yeah, but if we get that, if we don't get yank, then you'll say, well, then, John, we don't need to do this idea because, look, we just got a big turnout. So what would be the reaction that would prompt who are going forward with a seat at the tables?
That would have to be some research. I think, yeah, I think definitely make sure we're not a base. I mean, you said we leave it to the classified or the faculty to decide how they select someone. But most of the time, like the faculty leadership, it's like, God, you know, you've got to do it, everybody else has done it, we're sick of it, so. You really will fall into that.
If they say they're sick of it, then this is a moot point.
Well, I have no problem promoting even for August 20th, having a sit down with leadership for classified, leadership for faculty and say, hey, listen, the board is looking to aggressively pursue getting more staff in for the board meetings. And there's some options that we're talking about and getting somebody there, even if it's sitting down with them. Because just getting, by the time you get the agenda, by the time this comes out, it has been a long time developing. And unless you have a context for all of this, the impact of some of these items is completely lost and you have no context for how much time has been spent developing all of that. It would require investment in time to sit down and say, listen, this is what we're talking about. Or here's what's coming, you want input, have input on what's coming. It requires some points of education, someone would be willing, would be willing to sit down and invest that time, live in that time, someone would need to be willing to do that.
Jan, consider this, if in some spokeover room, the leadership of the California Teachers Association is trying to decide which districts we're going to next year put in our crosshairs. Well, there's that one district though that has respected us enough where they've got one of our teachers on the board or on, sitting at the table. I think that might then take the attention away from us in a favorable manner. You guys are teachers, you agree with your discipline?
So from a teacher perspective, what, what kind of pressure would there be on a teacher sitting up front at a board meeting with the expectation of engaging in dialogue on all agendas? So how would that?
Huge time commitment too. Look at how long we're on meetings.
It's a huge, huge responsibility to have this with that because a lot of teachers don't really, they're too busy doing it.
And they wouldn't have to do it.
And that one teacher who is a teacher is going to have to devote time to learning this stuff. And who are they going to report back to?
Their liaison to the faculty.
And how is it going to get reported back in a knowledgeable way that it doesn't become even more...
Dan?
I just want to jump in just the specific language because I think it has some helpful information. And we've kind of gone around talking about whether it's an advisor or a board member, but clearly it would be the idea that you're discussing is a seat at the diets. The code section is education code 3507 and it states that an employee of a school district may not be sworn in to office as an elected or appointed member of that school district's... an employee of a school district may not be sworn in to office as an elected or appointed member of that school district's governing board unless and until he or she resigns as an employee. If the employee does not resign, the employee will automatically terminate, not be sworn in to office. So this is why I think this is relatively untested, you know, because that language is fairly clear and also has a substantial penalty.
But Dan, the principal, the vice principal, the superintendent are employees and are sitting right here at the same table.
They, they have administrative roles in the process and working.
And there's actually Edcode specific responsibility to a superintendent to be sitting.
Well, I, so I, as I repeat myself a third time, the proposition would not even closely resemble this person being a board member, as purely a representative.
Right. So I think if I hear some of what Dan's saying, we are asking for consistent input from an employee sitting upfront and possibly influencing for decisions, correct? Does that suit you, Sam?
Yeah, this would be the same. My idea was if the person says, I'm only going to do it for two months, you know, my, my term, if you will, is for two months or four months or six months. That's all up to the body.
Right.
They can come up with their own rules. If a person stays there until they've, or they've been somebody else.
Obviously, they're asking them to be here consistently, interacting, engaging.
We're asking them.
Right, with all the agendas, correct?
But I'm sorry.
With all, helping with the entire agenda, correct? Aside from combination.
Well, I mean, that would be ideal, but if Tori needs to leave five minutes into board meeting, that's a lot.
Right. But I, I think it gets in so great with Dan referencing, if we're talking about what influence would like, where is that going to come? I think it's greater just for...
And I think there are labor relations implications that, that are aside from what we're talking about. This type of proposal would be clearly negotiable under the EDRA, would have implications in that sense as well. And there's also provisions on interfering with the internal politics or internal operations of the labor organization. So you run into those types of issues as well. I, all I'm trying to highlight is I think there are a number of various ways that this will impact operations of the board that would need, that you would, I would hope want, you know, full legal perspective on it before moving forward.
So what's, I wish you'd be airing on the side of caution. The parts of the matter is is having increased staff communication. That's really what I'm talking about. And then the process that John was suggesting and how do we get to where we need to be.
Just, well, I was just going to mention, so, so not to shut it off, but...
We should be waiting for a while.
Oh, she's been waiting for a while.
But, so do we have some direction to Scott that he can get started?
I like the idea of reaching out to the faculty and classified, asking them, maybe getting some ideas from them about how we can hear voices a little bit more, inviting them more at a steady basis, inviting them to term at our meetings. I feel more comfortable with that than having somebody sitting up here for some of the reasons that Dan mentioned. For starters, right now, is everybody okay with that?
I like the idea personally of a survey because if that thing comes back with, with an overwhelming negative response to me, this thing instantly goes away.
All right. All right. You have a conclusion? Okay, thank you for the discussion, folks.
Thank you.
So are there, so check out the upcoming meeting, we have one July, August 20th, same time, same station. And board comments or correspondence, anybody? I don't have any. Okay, this time for the sake of position. So people go into the session and it is 6:17.
We take a five to seven range, well, I don't know.
Five minute recess, folks, and then you will...
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Pass house. Dan, thank you.
Good to see you all.
All right.
Dan, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Dan, thank you for hanging in there.
See you.
Okay, good break, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
See you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate you.
See you.